All right, let's call the order. The Monday, May 8th, 2023, 2023 zoning board of appeals meeting. If we all could rise and pay respects for the flag.
I just to the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we note the role?
Noted, there's a quorum.
All right. First thing on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll approve it. I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries. Next is approval of the regular meeting. April 10th, 2023 minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes from April 2023.
April 10th? Yep. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second? Second? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. I don't see anyone, so we can close that part. Number seven, new business. The only thing we have for tonight is ZBA training workshop. With that, I will turn it over to the experts.
Good evening. My name is Megan Massaminnock. I'm with Carlisle Wortman, your planning consultants. And Nancy Olend is here with me from the Kelly firm. Thank you for spending your usual Monday night, not abating variances and exceptions to the rules, but indulging in a bit of training to prepare you for the upcoming months and years on the Board of Appeals. Some of you may not know me. I am the replacement Zach. Michelle's along with Alyssa Starling in our office. So Alyssa's going to be doing most of the, she's doing the inspections and the daily work. I just get to come in the evening and for committee and pre-application meetings. And I want to thank also your staff, especially Cheryl, who's been great in getting me oriented and being patient. And she was also instrumental in nudging us to get this together as well as, please know that you're not the only ones who have to endure. The township board went through a similar training and then the planning commission, we're planning on doing something similar as well. So. But for Mr. Bailey, it will not necessarily always be the same. So don't you dare think about skipping that planning commission meeting.
I wouldn't do it.
Bigger words for us.
So our agenda for tonight is we're going to go over roles and responsibilities, not only for you, but for everybody involved in planning and zoning at the township level. ZBA basics and maybe a little more. And then diving into making effective decisions and findings. Nancy and I are going to tag team that. The first two, you get me. And then I'm going to turn risk management over to Nancy because it's all about staying out of the courts. And as a lawyer, she's obviously expert at that much more than me as a planner. So roles and responsibilities. Basically, all these land use decisions, they don't operate in a vacuum. All of these players interact with each other on anything. If it gets up to the township board level, it has gone through administrative staff. Administrative staff, it's definitely gone through the planning commission. It may have had made a stop here at the Board of Zoning Appeals. But every day, flows of information and decision making go through these bodies. In the next slide, we'll talk about a little bit more of how that happens. So the legislative body, which is the township board, makes appointments. So they appointed every one of you who are here tonight and your alternates. You missed Birch, you're an alternate? Yes, and so your other alternate, your other board members who couldn't attend tonight. But they also adopt the ordinance, adopt the ordinance, so the zoning ordinance itself and the other ordinance that comes into a planning or zoning decision. And they've influenced site plans in that they've set those rules for them. But also an ordinance adoption, that's a rezoning as well. So when you're changing that color on the zoning map to say what can go where and how it can be built, that decision has to be made by the township board. They also greatly influence the daily functionings of planning and zoning by setting the budgets and the personnel. And as, in the future, likely, you're going to see more and more development than you see right now. And so those budgets may need to rise and those need to adjust. And we've worked with communities for over 40 years at Carlisle Wortman and seen them, you know, go up and down and contract and whatnot. That's always something that you do the budget every year. And that's something that happened, that happens and it can influence those land use decisions by surely who's in the room and who's in the township's offices. Also, the legislative body has the ability, they don't have to, but they have the ability to approve your master plan. Who knows what a master plan is? Rusty Payne?
Well, if I say it, does that mean I have to explain it?
Well.
That's why I slowly.
You can totally back to me. You can say yes, please.
I've been on, you know, years ago, I was on the master plan committee. So, you know, I know how it's arrived and I know, you know, the way to map and I know it has to be filed.
Yeah, and it's your 20, it's your vision of what you want the township to be.
Right.
And I always joke that the master plans, like the Pirates Cove. Has anybody seen Pirates in the Caribbean?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you know how they, they bend the rules and it sways as what they want. The master plan can do that because it's a guide. You can't anticipate everything. But your zoning ordinance, that's your local law and those are the rules. And then also the legislative body township board, there's other policy decisions that come in that'll affect land use, things like single hauler ordinances and whatnot. Planning commission is an appointed body. I know, Mr. Bailey, you serve there as well. They do the heavy lifting on the master plan, also on the zoning ordinance. They do all site plan reviews and they'll do, they'll, basically, they touch all the zoning reviews except those that are administrative. You, Board of Zoning Appeals, you're a little different. If you are comparing the structure of planning and zoning decisions to the federal government, you are the Supreme Court. So you are the one who hears appeals and decides about exceptions to the rules. And those exceptions to the rules have a fancy name called variances. And then there's appeals and we'll get into more of what those are, interpretations and then other duties. I haven't been at Oxford Township long enough to know what your other duties are. A lot of times if there's a separate ordinance for private roads or for signs or something else, the ZBA will be assigned that appeal role. And so I've been working in planning and zoning consulting for over 20 years and I've seen it where the ZBA has, does all the private road variances, but I've also seen it when those go to the township board. So it's just different from place to place. But every day you have your administrative support staff. The ladies right there who are helping you either at the meetings or at the, the public at the counter answering the phones. There's consultants like me who come in to play. Nancy and her firm and then Sharp Engineering. All of those folks provide you and the rest of the folks at the township to support, to make good decisions. All this authority blows from the Planning Enabling Act. I have a copy of the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act. I'm amazed again, after doing this for 20 years, I go back to them once a week and find something new. Also, Article 17 of the Oxford Township Zoning Ordinance nicely lists out what your roles and responsibilities are, what the standards are and is basically a good guide. So if you need a little bedtime reading, the Zoning Enabling Act, the Planning Enabling Act. If you just need a little morsel while you're eating breakfast, read Article 17. Any questions?
Said you had, like, copies of certain things for us?
Oh, yeah.
Just, no, I don't need to, no, I'm just curious. So I got something like you say, bedtime reading.
Yeah. So I will hand these out at the end. So you have them when you, when you leave. And then also, Mr. Maggely, is that how I say your name?
Magley.
Magley, I think you were the only person I haven't given a card.
Oh.
So.
She was charging five bucks for those.
There are additional legal constraints that come into this. So there are federal laws. One that I can quote is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. And it talks about where religious land uses, places of worship can go. And also Personal, Persons Act, that deals with jails and prisons. And that federal law basically says those need to go where there's some like uses to those and what types of uses religious land uses can have associated with them, whether they're soup kitchens to portable housing. And that all gets tested out in case law, which that's why you really do need your township attorney always there to consult because that constantly changes and so does state, state law. In federal law and state law changes. Also attorney general opinions come down and those change things. And then your local ordinances lay things out. And you have a very active ordinance review committee. I have been working with them. And your, your zoning ordinance seems to change at least once a year, which is good, that keeps you current and proactive rather than reactive. This is more for planning commission, but I wanted to share this with you because there's something that comes into play with your duties. So the planning commission has nondiscretionary and discretionary decisions. When it's a nondiscretionary decision, it means that if they meet all the rules, you have to say yes, even though you may not like it. Then if you really don't like it, then you should go back and look at the rules. And that's usually with any sort of zoning administration or site plan. But there's discretionary standards that come in where you are using your judgment. So is it compatible with another land use? Is it affecting health and safety? Is it affecting the natural resources? Usually those type of standards come in are called discretionary. And they come in with special land use, which is when a land use seems to be potentially more impactful and so it needs more scrutiny. And by state law, it has to have a public hearing, like you have here with everybody notified within 300 feet. And they have time to come and share what they think. I think the most vibrant of the ones you had lately had been the conditional rezoning for MI homes. And so that, and then, that's not a special land use, but that's an example of a public hearing. That would be at the planning commission level and at the township board level. Plan unit development, which is basically kind of contract zoning or more bargaining. They all give something that, and they want a bit of an exception to a rule. So a lot of times it's, we want more density, we want, or density either in the forms of height or rather than single family units, they'll be attached units. But in return, you, the developer will give something back to the township, be it protection of natural features, be it infrastructure, et cetera. Those and amendments, either to the zoning map or the zoning ordinance, those all have discretionary standards and they will never come to the ZBA. And it says that expressly in the zoning ordinance that that, you don't have those powers. You have zoning administration and site plan, those nondiscretionary decisions, those are the ones that you deal with. Any questions on that?
No, makes sense.
All right. So I just asked for questions and I didn't look at my slides ahead, even though they have this nifty thing in the PowerPoint. So zoning Board of Appeals basics. Your membership. So you have a minimum, you have five members and that comes directly from state law. Per your zoning ordinance, one member is from the planning commission, so Mr. Bailey. One member may be from the township board, Rusty Payne. And you have one to two alternates and you're allowed to have those by state law. Now, the planning commission doesn't have any alternates. And believe you me, it would have been convenient in the past two months for there to be some alternates. But the reason that you only have one to two, you have the alternates in the ZBA is if there are absences or conflicts of interest, a lot of times somebody needs to step off. And then by state law, you have to have three affirmative votes for any decision. So if there are only three members here, how many people, do all of you have to vote yes in order or no for something to happen?
It has to be unanimous.
Yeah, it has to be unanimous.
So one board member could say no and the other two say yes and then that's, that's it, it doesn't go?
It doesn't go. You don't have a decision. And that's why your alternates are really important is because a lot of times there will be a conflict of interest or maybe somebody couldn't be here. And the other thing to note is, let's say, Mr. Bailey wasn't able to be here. And so Ms. Birch steps in for him. Next meeting, you're able to be here, Mr. Bailey, but the item was tabled and they're still on the agenda. You would actually step off of that and then Ms. Birch would take your place. So you, you, you continue to go with the case. That's something that's often missed. Any questions on members, who they are, where it comes from? So your duties are interpretation and that's of the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. Actually, not nonconformities. I apologize, that is a mistake. So you'll need to cross that out on these. That was actually from another client where that ZBA did look at nonconformities. But you look at appeals and variances. And again, I'll get into more of the difference between an interpretation and appeal and a variance in a bit. The reason we picked this image is you're usually dealing with the ball, the one ball that's on the other side of the line. So you always get the squirrels. And then it doesn't quite fit. One thing that you do is interpretations. So there's the zoning map and the text. For the zoning map, you look at the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance. So that's the first thing when you open up that big fat book or the first thing when you go to the webpage. And you're looking at the location of zoning boundaries based on section 3.2, item C of the zoning ordinance. And that lays those out. One thing you should know and the reason I have the duck up there is that if it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Just like if the, the standards and the location of zoning boundaries are things like the center line of a road, the midpoint of a stream, the previous boundary of a parcel. Let's say the zoning map was done at a certain point and then a parcel combined or changed or split. Those are when those come in. But you have the ability then, again, if that parcel line changed, let's use that, you know, as close as possible, so duck to duck. Whereas in the text, again, you use the intent and the purpose of the zoning ordinance. But this, you want it to be as narrow as possible. It needs to be practical, but this is not the time to have a wild imagination. This is the time to be as close as possible. And they should be limited to the context of the situation for which the interpretation is being, is being asked. And also, when looking at that text, it is advised to give weight to past use. So that how things were interpreted and what things were done in the past. Have you had any interpretations that you remember at this board?
No.
Okay. I will say that your zoning ordinance is very detailed, so I'm not surprised. Appeals. So these also are unusual and my, again, over 20 years, I've had two that I've dealt with. This is when applicant feels like there was an error that was made, whether it was the order in which something was done, whether something is being required and they feel like that's not appropriate, whether it was the decision that was made, like a site plan denial or the denial of a sign permit, which might have come from, that would, that would have come from the planning consultant in your case. And it's the, or determination by an administrative official. So that could be me, that could be your building official, Tim London, that could be Cheryl Lottan if you were, she was making the decision. But often also it could be the planning commission. Because again, remember on those certain decisions that they are an administrative body. But again, if this is one of those ones with the discretionary standards, a special land use or plan unit development, and somebody feels like you've made that, some, the planning commission has made a mistake, it can't come here. Their next remedy is to go to circuit court. And again, then you call Nancy and her office. So now, if you have an appeal decision, this is a yes/no scenario with different steps. So if you determine that decision was consistent with the zoning ordinance, I, I did everything right when you look at the rules, then you affirm that decision wholly and you uphold the decision. So we're going to use a sign permit and I'm the person who is being appealed against. So if you looked at that and I denied the certain part and you said, yeah, Megan looked at the permit, the permit had all the things, she noted these reasons that the sign was too big as the reason that's being denied, we agree. So you would affirm my decision wholly. And again, if the applicant still felt aggrieved, they would go to circuit court. Let's say though, you look at it and say, gosh, Megan, you screwed up. Like you, when looking at the sign area, counted the whole sign and we happened to just count the characters. I don't know whether that's true, I'm not looking at the ordinance. I deal with about a number of different communities, but this is our what-if scenario. But it's still too big. So you would, you could overturn in part in that case and say, yes, she made the wrong decision, however, the copy area is still too big. So we're going to, you still, you applicant, your permit is still denied. And because you're appealing my decision, you have all the powers that I have. You don't normally have those powers, but when you're making the appeal, you assume the powers of whoever it was. So it might be the planning commission, it might be the planning consultant, it might be the zoning minister, it might be the building official. But let's say, again, with this theoretical sign permit, I made a misinterpretation of the copy area and now the sign complies. So you would then, you could overturn my decision in whole. And then that person would get their sign permit. Yes.
Okay, because we've run across situations like this. If we say the copy area is too big, can we offer to the applicant to make it, to make that in conform, to conform with the?
On an appeal, no. What they would do then is they would, they could appeal for a variance. So they could ask for a variance, which is a different thing.
Okay.
Okay. But that's a good question because it can get complicated, right?
Yes, it does.
And it can feel really complicated when they're here and you're going back and forth and you're trying to figure out what's best and.
Yeah.
Yeah. In those cases, you really need to depend on your standards. And you have pretty clear standards. Number one, strict compliance is unreasonable or unnecessarily burdensome. That doesn't mean that it's the highest and best use is off the table because of the rules or, you know, whatever it is to make the most money, that's not the bar. The bar is whether they can have some return on their investment, whether it's reasonable. Also, another standard is substantial justice. So I assume you've seen a lot of decks. So substantial justice would be somebody's appealing to put on a deck, let's say they've got a strange backyard due to the lake shore and they want a deck that's just like their neighbors. They want the same sized deck, right? That, that they have the same sized deck as the neighbors or the people that are along that section of the lake shore, that's substantial justice. Now, they were asking for a deck that was huge, much bigger than everybody else's. That's not substantial justice. Then your third standard is that a lesser variance would not give substantial relief. And so I think this has come into play with your signs. Because a lot of people come in and they ask for the world, right? And really what you're looking to do is to give them the least amount of relief to a certain degree. Because you're also the protectors of the zoning ordinance and its integrity. And if you are giving out exceptions willy-nilly to whatever they want, then that's not protecting that zoning ordinance. Also, a fourth standard is unique circumstances. And I picked this special snowflake for a reason. It needs to be something that's unique or exceptional. So I know you have tons of lakes here, so you've dealt with that weird back, rear lot line because of that. You have probably dealt with, you know, large trees that are blocking something. You, topography from, especially if you're in a housing subdivision that's reclaimed from a gravel pit. Those are all, you know, unique circumstances and they have to be unique to that lot. It has to be unique to the property or to the building. It cannot be unique to the person. And I had advise ZBAs where someone has come in and cried and they're looking to put in a barrier-free ramp for their beloved family member and it violates the front yard setback. That's not the reason to give it. You can't, by law, it's not supposed to be that person. That's a really hard place. Sometimes, maybe perhaps, we can really look at those standards and see how they apply to that building or lot. But those type, it needs to be about the building or the land, not the individuals. Because these variances, as you know, go with the land. So if the beloved family member passes away and they move, then whoever buys that house, then they have the barrier-free ramp. And maybe they have three-year-olds who use it for skateboarding instead. You just don't know who those folk, who will get it the next time. So another challenge we all have in planning and zoning, no matter what the decision is, it's not just to think about the applicant who's in front of you. You ideally are thinking two to three property owners ahead. And is this the right situation also in, in those circumstances? Your fifth standard, and again, these are, you, it's, one or more of these standards are met. Some communities I work with, you have to meet all five and it's a really hard bar, high bar. But your zoning ordinance says one or more. So the fifth one is that it's not self-created. And that's probably the one you struggle with the most, right? And I was telling Nancy earlier today, I put the boat up there because when I first started out in early 2000s, people were like, yeah, boys with toys, that's what you deal with at ZBAs. You know, I got a bigger boat, I got a bigger camper, I need a bigger barn. Oh, now that barn is 20 feet high in order for me to get it in instead of 14 feet, which is, so. So you can see how it's hard to overcome that self-created obstacle when it's about that situation. So. Any questions on those? Because the next one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you work. Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, no, I went throwaway. Okay. So I'll go through these one by one, but I want to hear from you whether these are appropriate reasons to grant variances. Number one, no one came to object.
No.
No. It's the only sign they make.
No.
No, okay. The ordinance is too strict.
No.
Now, just to stop, if that happened and you really do feel like it's too strict, you may want to consider also in some way communicating to folks that maybe an ordinance change is warranted. Also, if you were seeing the same variance five or six times. Also, if you were seeing the same variance five or six times, that's a clear sign that your zoning ordinance, um, isn't dealing with that situation well.
Right.
Right? Um, we gave this variance before.
No.
That's correct. No, that's a tough one though, because you're, it's a natural thing to look at the precedent that you had set before. But also, every piece of property is unique in a unique case, so you need to judge it on that. The only reason why is if we gave that variance before is if you gave that variance before in very similar circumstances. Um, so probably the deck with the odd-shaped backyard due to the lake shore, um, that might be worthwhile looking back at those. Um, it's already built.
No.
Um, we know they will do a good job.
No.
Yeah, especially because you can't base it on who the person is. Again, it's about the property or the building. Uh, it's only a small variance.
I got a question on.
Yeah.
It's already built. If it's already built and they come and ask for the variance and we say no, they tear it down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. I've dealt with townships that have done that. An extreme case was, um, a colleague in our office just sent it around. Um, in New York City, they, uh, built a building. It was too tall based on the zoning. It was five years of livocation, but they made them take five stories out of the building after it was already built. In Manhattan.
Wow.
Yeah, so, um, what, I would say what your township does in, and what my colleague Alyssa does every Tuesday and Thursday, is goes out and does state inspections, and you do footing inspections as well. Um, and then you have certified surveyors who give you as-built. Um, those steps, uh, almost guarantee that no one's gonna put it in the wrong place. It, and so you have a, you have a very good amount of oversight to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Except for the sheds and decks that are built without permits.
Right, except for the sheds and decks that are built without permits. All right, uh, it'll make the area better. Is that a reason to give a variance? Um, and the applicant saying, I didn't know about the regulation.
No.
Yeah. All right, so you pass A+. Um, so voting. Uh, again, I talked about when you need three affirmative votes. So for administrative matters, um, you, it's the majority of the quorum. Um, so whoever's here, so let's say you only have three people to, um, I don't know. If you're opening up the meeting, if you're adjourning the meeting, if you're approving the minutes, if you're approving the agenda, you can have a two-one vote. But when it's those non-use variances, interpretations, administrative appeals, that has to be the majority of the memberships, you have to have three votes. So again, your alternates are really important, um, to have them at standby. And alternates, you have a tough job, because you get a packet, you don't know whether you have to read it and go through all these things and things like that. Um, but my advice is to, you know, always be prepared, like a boy scout. All right, so any questions on that zoning, zoning board of appeals basics? Any suggestions or stories to share that are illustrative?
Suggestions for what?
Things I missed?
No, I got them.
Okay. All right, um, our next item is making effective decisions, and I'm gonna ask Nancy to like, scoot up here when, when she's ready, yeah. Um, I picked the paint splotch in the back, um, because I feel like this is what zoning boards of appeals often feel at the end of a long public hearing and deliberation. You feel like you've just been like mushed and worked over and we just need to make a decision. Um, but sometimes that's the most crucial point and when you need to be as clear as possible it can be. So, um, one, these are things, elements of making an effective decision, we'll go through these one by one. So that preparation is to, number one, conduct a site visit. Um, we looked at the application today, um, and saw that you, by somebody signing that variance application, they give any city township official permission to come on their property, right Cheryl? Um, and Cheryl confirms that there hasn't been, um, any problems with folks doing site visits. I've had some other communities where, um, folks have been hesitant, um, or, um, folks who applied were not welcoming. Um, and so I was actually asking Nancy about that today, um, and about permissions and things like that.
So we can walk onto a piece of property if we're having a ver, uh, uh, an application before, we can go there and take a look at what we're up against, I guess?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, you can use that.
Which would lead you to the next point, which would be be very careful to avoid ex parte contact, right? So when the applicant or folks that are engaged or involved in this variance, communications with those individuals outside of the meeting is discouraged and really should not even happen. It could really create some conflict of interest or even just perception is reality kind of a thing. So avoid all of those ex parte contacts. If somebody has an application in the process, they can deal, sorry, with the administrative staff who can relay that information to you. And then it can be dealt with by this, by this body in a public forum versus those private communications, because they'll just end up getting people in trouble more often than not.
Is that something that should be notified if, say, I'm gonna go out and look at somebody's, the property that they look? I mean, if they called the sheriff, they called whatever, is that something I should have called in and said, hey, I'm visiting in case you get a call?
Um, a lot of communities I work with, they ask for folks to do that. Um, it can't hurt to give Cheryl a call, right Cheryl? Um, and then, but again, when they sign that, when they sign that application, they did give you permission. Right, huh? Um, if you have that ex parte contact.
You definitely should be reporting it. You should let folks know just so that there is no impropriety or accusation of impropriety. And then you can, you know, seek to cure if you need to, right? If something needs to be done, you want to let your attorneys know, you want to let folks know, so if we need to step in and assist in some manner, then we can, we can support you in that.
Nancy, I do have a question, um, not only with the applicant, but what if the neighbors come over and go, oh, what are they trying to do and stuff?
Would be the same thing as far as the communication. Now technically, they are not the applicant, right? So there is not technically that ex parte communication, but again, perception is reality. So you denied my request because, you know, my neighbor got in your ear and they told you all about this and you knew them, you went to high school with them, and everybody knows it, you know, just avoid all of that contact altogether. So just redirect everyone to have those conversations in the public body. Invite them to submit some type of a letter, anything like that, they want to, if, if a neighbor, somebody wants something to go on their record. But they, they really should not be having direct communication with the, with the, with the board. As individuals.
Yeah.
As a whole, yes, as individuals.
Absolutely. Review your materials so you get, um, Cheryl will always make sure you get your packet by Thursday. Um, look at those ahead of time. Um, if appropriate, there'll be reviews from the planner, attorney, engineer. There might be some other professional reports you may need at one point in time, the application and plans, and also the ordinance requirements. Um, and by all means, ask questions. That may mean that you may need to open your packet earlier rather than later. Um, but, um, I, I gave everybody here my card tonight. You all know how to reach Cheryl. Cheryl, I know, definitely knows how to reach me. Um, it, there's no such thing as a stupid question. Um, you should absolutely ask.
I'm gonna double down on that a little bit and say not only should you should ask, it's pretty much incumbent upon you to ask, right? Because by accepting the role, you have said, okay, I'm going to know the things that I'm reviewing, I'm gonna have some level of information. No one expects anybody to be an expert on planning and boundaries and it's just, I was talking, Megan, it's a foreign language, right? So you should be asking some questions so that you can make the most informed decision. And there is no dumb question, nobody is gonna get aggravated, you know, ask as many questions as you need to feel comfortable in making those decisions, because it's gonna impact, you know, your residents and everything else they do. So I would say not only you should feel like you should ask questions, I mean, I, I think you, you need to ask questions, so just doubling down on that a little bit.
Thank you. Um, the other thing I'll say that's not on the slide is there is lots of training out there. Michigan Association of Planning has great resources. Um, if you have the ability to do their citizen planner program, that is a wonderful program. Um, they also, um, Michigan State Extension has a ZBA Essentials, and both of those are all online. Um, and then if you are a in-person conference type of person, um, the, uh, citizen planner from MSU Extension is available at Michigan Association of Planning's conference every year. Um, and so you may want to consider that, um, and all of those will help you to be a better ZBA member, um, or, um, elected or appointed official, um, whatever role you serve in.
Have any of you had a chance to look at the MSU Extension ones ever? So in, in my opinion, that doesn't speak property, the same levels as everyone else. Those are really, really easy to digest and maneuver through. They're very informative. They have citations if you want to go and get more information, but they're very digestible for folks that are not like, you know, immersed in statute and the language of all that stuff. So it's, it's a really great resource.
All right, so you've done all your preparation, you are here at the meeting. Um, one of the most important things to do is to keep order. A lot of that's gonna fall to your care. Um, and to stay on subject, to eliminate misunderstandings of outcomes, and to maintain fairness during deliberation. This is often really hard, because you have people who are before you, especially if they're a homeowner. This is their biggest investment. Yeah, there, there's sometimes nothing more emotional than home. Um, and so by keeping that order and decorum, um, we keep everybody calm and we can deliberate and make the, make better decisions. Can you just add that?
Yeah, I just am having nightmarish thoughts about the, the variance request for the ramp and then the angry neighbor saying, give him the ramp! And you can't, I mean, it just, it could get very emotional and you'd have to control all that. So there's a lot of things you wouldn't expect. It's a zoning board meeting that you can probably have to be prepared to deal with.
Mm-hmm. Um, and you can do that through your deliberation process. So everybody who, every variance case, there's a public hearing. Um, and so there should be rules for the people who come up here. Um, there should be a degree of formality, um, and that again, starts with the tone from up here. And that reflects on what goes on as people come to the podium, repeating what your rules are, how you want people to act, setting that stage. Um, all the comments should go through the chair. Um, so many times I've seen somebody come up, begin to talk, and then they turn to the applicant and they start asking them questions, right? Um, if you can encourage them to say, please, direct all the questions through the chair. I promise you, every single question you ask, we will get you an answer, as to the best of our ability. But on that bargain, you have to be willing to follow through with that bargain. So before the meeting, either you as the chair, you're gonna write those down, um, or you're gonna tap your staff and ask them to please write down those questions and then maybe defer to them later, um, to see whether we're going through those. Um, what, another thing to do is to limit the speaking time. Um, I think I was mentioning, uh, to trustee Payne and, uh, Ms. Birch ahead of time, that I do have a planning commission meeting, um, later on this week where, um, the first public hearing for that case, 300 people attended. Um, so you can see that limiting the speaking time to five minutes is essential, because otherwise.
Three minutes for us.
Yeah, so make sure that you have those, those are best in your bylaws if you can, um, and save them every time and let people know. Um, limit the number of times speaking. Um, a lot of groups that I, communities that I work with, they'll only allow people to speak once, or they won't allow people to speak twice until they're assured that everybody who wants to is spoken is spoken. Another thing that you can do is have rules for groups where they have a spokesperson. So, and often you may allow them to have a greater amount of time, um, be it six minutes or 10 minutes, so that they can encompass that. Otherwise, I've seen this strange relay rates that really organized groups will do, um, where they literally hand each other the script as they reach the end of their three minutes. But keeping that deliberation process, um, having those rules and having, and having those all clear and just gently enforcing them really helps to, to keep everybody in the space where we're talking and discussing. Um, there's also rules for decision makers, so for all of you up here. Ideally, your comments come through the chair. So that you may be talking to each other, but he needs to recognize you and then he, questions that you want asked to, so the planning consultant or the township attorney to direct through the chair and say, is it okay if I ask them that? So just to make sure that that's the pinpoint for the information. Um, also to deliberate in the open, um, so no side conversations. Um, you're absolutely allowed to express your opinions and you should. Um, and then, but when you're making decisions, you need to use those ordinance standards. Um, because otherwise you're getting yourself in a place where it's gonna make Nancy and her colleagues nervous.
This is, on this slide, so it's not deliberation, but I just want to remind everybody, if there is a complicated issue or something that you know is going to be, uh, on the agenda, that you want to get a little bit more information about, you can reach out to our office and ask for an opinion letter, which would then have, um, a statement that will allow you to go into closed session. And that way you could go in there and you could, you know, do like, sort of like an educational piece on that particular legal issue, so that you're not having that discussion in the open. Now, of course, it's against the Open Meetings Act to deliberate and make decisions in closed sessions, but you can certainly raise questions about the legal issues that you are hearing. And so we can assist and provide those types of things when you need them.
All right, so you deliberated and now you're into decisions and motions. And a motion is a formal proposal by a member. Now, I've seen your township board in action, and I've seen your planning commission in action. And I have to say, trustee Nold is the, just a wizard at crafting a motion, right? He always has them written out and ready to go. Um, and, um, so I don't know who your energizer bunny of motions is here. Um, maybe you spread it out, but really in order for you to start, you need a motion to, to start out. And, um, just think of that as you're just setting the ball in motion. Um, you're not necessarily saying, I absolutely love this motion and everything about it. Um, because during that decision deliberation, um, you could do amendments, or you could vote it up. Uh, you could put it up for a vote and then it fails and then, and then you come right back. And just because a motion fails doesn't mean that you failed.
You're saying you can amend a motion while it's still in the motion phase before it's voted in?
Somebody's made a motion, and then let's say another member wants to, um, say.
Add something to it.
Add something to it. Some little thing, yeah. They could say, I, I would like to make an amendment. And then not only is it the person who made the original motion, but the person who seconded it, that original motion had to accept that amendment. Um, and so that brings, that's into the bullets on the slide in terms of main and secondary. So main brings that subject to the floor and they're amendable and debatable. And then the secondary motion modifies that main motion, and those can be amendable and debatable. Um, and, um, so, and as we discussed, that's a common secondary motion is an amendment, but also maybe, um, at the end, your, your recess or your adjournment. Um, and sometimes this can go on for 45 minutes, right? Uh, you go back and forth and back and forth, um, and that may get into how you debate. Um, if you're having tons of these and people are getting, are, are getting confused or people are talking over these, these are some good rules to use. Um, but the chair needs to recognize the speaker. Again, everything goes through the chair. Um, limit the time of those speaking, um, and to give others time to contribute. So, um, it may be that you need a rule, or it may be you have a chatty Cathy who just needs to, Cheryl needs to say, we've heard from you, I'd like to hear from others. Um, make sure that no one's, be respectful and don't carry on side conversations. Also, don't carry on side conversations electronically. Like, that has happened.
Yeah, knowing that the last sitting up at the top, you know, it can be considered a violation of the Open Meetings Act as well, so make sure that's not happening.
Just make them shut their phones off.
Yeah, and then some common courtesies in terms of the speaking order is that the maker of the motion speaks first. And then, no members were permitted to speak twice until each member has had the opportunity to share. Again, a lot of the burden falls on the chair too to, there's only five of you, so you don't have the challenge of a township board or a planning commission with seven or I work with some planning commissioners where there's nine members and I always admire those chairs because that's a lot of people to keep track of. So anything else that you want to add to debate?
No, the only thing else that I would say about these rules is that they should be announced, you know, ahead of time. You don't want to just like change them midway because you're tired of somebody, you know. So you want to kind of read the room. If you're going to need these rules, you're going to want to, you know, announce those ahead of time. Will be better so that people don't feel like they're being picked on or singled out or being treated differently than what they would have been.
Is that something that should be read at every meeting? Just for consistency?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of zoning board appeals I work with have, the chair has about a paragraph that they read every time. Some people need that and need to read it. Others are just more and more dynamic and will work off four or five points. Another place where you can put those are your bylaws. And have those there.
Yet I would say, don't get tricked because you think it's going to be not so, you don't have to worry about it because there's only like one person here to talk about it because they could come and just like filibuster, right? So you want to put some rules in place, you know, even if, you know, you would think, "Oh, we want to put some rules in place because the room is full, we want to give every chance." But it could be, you might need to do it even when there's just me.
And we'll talk about this later, but all of your meetings are recorded. So people go back and see what you did in other instances as well. So because of that record, it's even more important to have those rules be consistent. So when you're debating and you're going to debate, number one, stick to the subject. Also, like, you know, every good facilitator's ground rules is that it's not personal about the subject at hand. So debate issues, not personalities. Use formal speech, even though you may know each other really well. I joke a lot of times with that. You know, lots of my planning commissions, zoning board of appeals, township boards, they all refer to me as Megan. I feel like it's because I do my job so well and like Beyonce. But, you know, how you address your staff, how you address each other, again, that sets that tone. So it's Mr. Chair or Trustee Payne, Ms. Birch, Mr. McGally. Those actually go a long way to kind of keeping the tone. When you feel like you may be getting on too long, you can make a motion, any member could, to limit or extend limits on the debate possible. So say, you know, "Look, we're approaching 10 o'clock. I would like to make a motion that we reevaluate at 10 to see whether we can still go forward and make a good decision." You have those abilities during your debate. But it's better to put those out there and make a motion, have somebody second, vote on it, and then you're all in agreement about where you're going.
I think that stick-to-the-subject one, though, is your friend, if you make it, your habit. So that horrible example that Megan gave about the wheelchair ramp, right? The topic, the subject is the ramp and the setback in the building, not this wonderful member of our community that's had this tragedy and everybody wants to talk about it. The subject is the ramp of the building. And if you get used to doing that when you get those sticky situations that are personal, you'll feel more comfortable in doing that and people will expect it from you because that's been your norm. So it won't seem so cold when you have to be cold if you just do it all the time.
Consistency, basically, through across the board.
And that meeting etiquette is important because you're the face of the township. Again, as we mentioned, these are recorded. People can watch them at 2:00 in the morning in their pajamas. Then, and also they'll see the respect you have for each other and for the public. Again, treat everybody fairly, treat each other fairly, treat folks who are coming before you. And here's the real challenge is to keep your actions simple and understandable. And that gets difficult when you're looking at a sign variance where you're maybe, I know you had a sign, you've had variances where they've been asking for six different exceptions to the rules on one sign. And so those get really tricky. And those may need some preparation ahead of time. And as we said, we're here for you. So if as chair, you need to walk something through, don't hesitate to call or as a ZBA member to talk something through. You're going to get to points where you feel like, "Gosh, we should really table this." Is it table or...?
Postpone to a specific time.
Thank you.
We table indefinitely.
Yeah. And there are times where it's appropriate and when it's not appropriate. So is it appropriate if there's an incomplete application? If there's extensive changes necessary in order to comply? If you just don't simply have enough information, then it is fine to say, "We're going to delay this and postpone." And then to set the rules of what that is when it can come back. Sometimes the applicant will request that delay in writing. If they get here and they see that there's only three of you, they may also come up to the podium and say, "Can we delay?" Because they know they need all three of you or hopefully someone's told them that ahead of time or the chair will tell them that when the case comes up. And then also when it's necessary, information from an agency or an applicant hasn't been received. And that can happen often at a zoning board of appeals because you have to notice for the public hearing three weeks ahead of time, right, Cheryl? So, because of the way that the papers work. So a lot of times, they may have promised information or we may think we're getting something from MDOT or the Road Commission or the Water Resources Commission, and that just hasn't come in. It's not appropriate when the receipt of another agency permit can be handled as a condition. So let's say it's about a driveway. It's about landscaping around a driveway. So they're asking for dispensation about the number of bushes. And they haven't gotten their, and it's on the pure road, they haven't got their MDOT driveway permit yet. If that permit's not going to change what that landscaping would be or where it would be and that's not material to the case, that's not a reason to delay. It's just something you can make a condition of. Or that minor changes the plan are required and they wouldn't affect the layout, i.e. that variance, you know, that larger sign. There maybe, let's say, the lighting didn't have the right, it didn't have the, it didn't have the photometrics on it. So the planner, I can't evaluate whether it meets the lighting standards. Well, that's a simple condition. You can just say, "Conditional upon meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance to be verified by the township planning consultant." Does that make sense when it's appropriate to delay and when it's appropriate not to?
Yeah.
Anything to add on? And then on motions, you need to phrase these very carefully because after review, it's circuit court. Ensure that everyone's clear on the motion. You have great staff who can write, who can always repeat them back and always are prepared to. Make sure that you reference the relevant sections of the zoning ordinance in the reports. And then make sure that, if you're going to impose conditions and conditions can be imposed on any variance, they need to relate to it and also be actionable. And ideally, also you say who are going to, who's going to do it. So the example I gave before about the lighting standards, they need to meet X standard of the ordinance to be verified by the township planning consultant. Or it could be by the township zoning administrator. But give that duty to someone. So to quote my Army Officer Father, "If you don't want a task, if you want a task not to be done, don't assign it to anyone." So you have that ability in your motion to assign it.
Yeah, one good rule of thumb, unless you have a master writer, keep your motions to like one thing. So they're simple and understandable for the court. When you throw in more than one, make sure that you're making more than one action in that motion. Make sure it's really, really clearly written and someone's helped you with it, usually.
So basically, just the motion contains one item, basically. And then if there's other items, you don't group them together?
You can have more than one thing in a motion, but a good rule of thumb, unless you're really good at writing them, really comfortable with what you're saying, put one topic in. Otherwise, get some help and just make sure it's really, really solid. We write them all the time to have a bunch of things in them. But that's where they get tricky for folks.
And sometimes you'll get something from the attorney or maybe from our office and you'll want to cite that letter, right? You want to read right from there. If you're not going to change that at all, you could just say, "The motion that's included in this." And Susan is, again, awesome in repeating them back so that everybody knows. But she also takes really good notes and then can repeat them back to you. And it's kind of a best practice for the chair to ask for that motion to be read before you have your final vote.
Now, do we follow Robert's Rule to the letter of the law? Or is it just, because I know in Robert's Rule, technically, the chair is supposed to say, "I have a motion," and reread it so that it's clear.
I haven't gone through your bylaws enough to know whether you need to use Robert's Rules.
At the township board level, we do not use Robert's Rules.
Yeah.
We follow some back similarly thereof, but we don't have a ordinance to follow Robert's Rules.
It's the good general guideline. But it's not, to my knowledge, either. It's not written anywhere in your zoning board. It goes that that is the adopted, you've got to follow it. It might say in one of them that that might be like something that you use as a guide. I know we have quite a few clients that say that. I don't have any clients that say it's Robert's Rules and that's it.
And I have seen clients then get caught in, when you have a personality conflict on a board, they will often use Robert's Rules against each other. And then, you know, this wasn't a legislative body, but their meeting started at 7:00. They didn't get to their consent agenda to 8:30. So, you know, even sometimes the best-laid plans or the best guides can sometimes come at you. And that's where also, you know, everybody should know what the rules are and how you're going to deliberate together, but also it takes a good chair to do that. And then also, some of what falls to the chair is maintaining relationships. And so that everybody, if they all have to communicate through you, they all need to trust you. So some musts on motions. Variance name and number, the date of the plan, including any revision dates. The result, whether it's approved, approved with conditions, denied, postponed. Findings and supporting actions. Please, 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 please have findings. So, and those findings should relate back to the standards. And then any of those conditions are with time tables and as I threw in, who's going to check them? And, you know, who will verify the conditions if they're met? And those are if applicable because there may be times where you don't have conditions. Those conditions, again, may be attached to any affirmative decision. So when you're saying yes, if you're saying no, there's no reason to put any conditions on it. And they have to be reasonable and bear a relationship to the review standard. So it can't be, "I really like red roofs. I'm fine with giving you the variance on the length of your eve as long as your roof is right." It's going to give you all heartburn, right, Nancy?
Yes, pursue it too. You know that phrase you hate to read when a lawyer sends you a letter? Pursue it too. Pursue it too, rule this, we are approving the variance. It's within the acceptable color of roofs. So we are approved, you know, that type of...
All right. And then some general zoning principles to keep in the back of your head as you're leading out all these. The right control land decisions is not absolute. It's not absolute with the township, it's not absolute with the individuals. So the rights of the public and those of the individuals must be weighed against each other. As I said before, it's the reasonable use of their property and a reasonable economic return. Reasonable, not highest and best, not most, not, it's most convenient. And that zoning ordinance must be fair and reasonable as is the administration of it, since you hear appeals. And so it can't be arbitrary. Anything to add on those? The best defense is a good master plan. And so update it every five years, take a look at it. And those zoning ordinances should not exclude otherwise lawful uses. Now, there are exceptions to these rules. Sometimes it's trash in terms of landfills and et cetera. There are exceptions to this rule dealing with manufactured housing perks and different ones. Sometimes with gravel mining as well. That has very specific standards that are in state law, which may change within a week.
Within a week.
Yeah, yeah.
Within a week.
Within a week. So if you're iffy on a certain use, by all means, again, call your professionals, ask what's going on. Because there are certain ones where they have carve-outs in the state law that are different for anywhere from music lessons to extraction to schools, et cetera. Marijuana, yes. And then following good procedure matters. So knowing what your procedures are in Article 17, knowing the ZBA, knowing the local ordinance. And then requiring applicants to seek zoning relief to follow those procedures. Some people want to skip steps, right? They want to get to the end. A lot of times, you're their last stop before they get to the end. And so just know people are anxious, but you've got to go through your processes. And also to deal with zoning issues in a prompt manner, you may have a frequent flyer who you really don't want to see again. Maybe somehow we all think we're not going to be here in June and we'll have to cancel. That's not good practice and that's going to get you in a spot where you don't want to be. Some other good general zoning principles are, make sure that it's all done in an open meeting. We talked about this again. Sometimes this is hard. Sometimes the meeting breaks up, meeting's over and you're all still hanging out here and talking and I got to get in my car and go back to Sido Township in Wasna County. And you all make me nervous, sitting here chatting because it's not an open meeting anymore.
Ever three or more of you are gathered.
Right.
That's the old wedding song. You make me...
Yeah, and all these facts need to be, maybe you receive it in an open meeting, discuss it in an open meeting. Otherwise, you're just inviting...
Scrutiny.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can be the most perfect to the letter, follow the rules in the world, but you let that perception light come in and that's what matters.
And last general zoning principle slide is, when you're making a decision, make sure it's supported by evidence. So again, the standards are what you need to go back to. Those five things, every single point. Every single one of those decisions on variances need to touch one of those five. Also, create a good record. So that record is your packet. Your record is what you say here. Your record is making sure your minutes are correct. And then also, the record is in the files in Township Hall. And so those are all the touchpoints in terms of making a record in case things would ever go to court. And also, it's a good record for new characters like me when they come in because I'm often asked to, "Hey, can you look at this building permit? They're, you know, they want to build this house or they want to, they want to put this deck back on." Well, if they got a variance, I need to know what the variance was and be able to go back. And I have dealt in some communities where, we know they got a variance. We don't know what they got a variance for. And so, like, what those minutes are, it may seem like a small part of your job to review the minutes, but those minutes really, four or five years from now, are going to matter if something's being rebuilt, repaired, et cetera. And then, I think we've said it, but you're experts. We're here to serve. And expertise and guidance can be crucial. And wherever there's something that you feel like... And wherever there's something that you feel like it's going to be generating controversy, it's better to invite us in early and have us say, oh, I think you're a little too worried, you don't need us.
Call the lawyer before you commit the crime.
Yeah, yeah.
You haven't heard that one yet? Oh, you haven't called me yet. I say that all the time. I would say, no, you're right, call me before you commit the crime.
So, you know, our office is on a retainer. We have a certain amount of time that's set aside from you. But my colleague, yeah, Melissa, is here every Tuesday and Thursday. I'm generally here every other Thursday, so we're around and available. And like I said, if you can't find me, Cheryl knows where to find me.
Just an email away.
Yep. So any questions?
No.
I'm going to turn it over to Nancy to talk about risk management.
Oh, the fun part. Okay, so risk management, basically, you know, this was going to come down to, you can't really avoid litigation, right? You can do the best thing in the world, but somebody can sue just because they want to. Doesn't mean they're going to win, just means they can, right? So what we want to make sure that you know is that you can manage that risk by doing the things that Megan has talked about already tonight. Consistent rules, putting them out ahead of time, following those consistently, being fair and consistent with everyone that you deal with, avoiding those conflicts of interest. If you're doing that site visit and somebody's approaching you, very politely letting them know, can't really have these communications right now, it wouldn't be appropriate. Just being friendly and upfront and transparent and all those steps. People can deal with that if you tell them. If you just ignore them, then they get a little like, why aren't you talking? But if you just tell them, these are the rules, they can work with that, right? And then keeping accurate and complete records so that folks can step in and help you at any point in that process. Risk management, so with conflict of interest, that's a big one, right? So identifications, if you are the applicant, you might have a conflict of interest, right? So that's when your alternates are going to be very important so that you're not the one making the decisions on those things where you might be one. It might be a relative, these are close communities. Can you imagine having a relative come up and having to ask a question about building a deck or putting in a hot tub or something like that? It's a very real thing, right? Business associate, any of you not have to work or know anybody else? Someday I hope to be one of those people. Close ties, I think the best rule for this though is if you have to ask if you're not sure, that's a good indicator that you should keep asking and you probably should err on the side of conflict of interest. I want to make sure everything is above board as much as possible, okay?
So do you recuse yourself then?
You would be able to recuse yourself and then one of those alternates would be able to step in as that voting member.
Okay, so that is something that you should do or?
You should.
Just the same.
There is no requirement, but ideally, yes. We would say in our opinion, you probably should recuse yourself. Procedures, you're going to state the nature of the conflict. This is my son, I don't want to make a decision on my grandchildren's home, you know. Request to abstain from the discussion of the voting, that must be approved. So when you recuse yourself, you say, I moved to recuse because of this, the board has to vote and agree to that. So, you know, because sometimes folks say that they have a conflict of interest that other people don't see as a conflict. And they might really want your vote on that thing. So they could say no, but generally depending on the relationships of the board, if you feel like it's not something that you're comfortable with, usually your board members are going to support you. Again, sometimes if they need to get that no vote and they know that's what you're going to do, they'll be like, no, I don't. You know what I mean? So there's always politics involved, but it's got to be approved by the body and then the minutes need to reflect that. And then again, the reasons why, he needs to be in there. We talked about this already, you need to provide what the reasonable use is, cite it. And you say it's a reasonable use to add this for this particular purpose, whatever's in the ordinance. I think we already talked about this, it doesn't have to be the best, most important, not the most expensive, not the most profitable. Support your decision with the findings based on the standards. I think Megan has said that maybe twice, I don't know, maybe 10 times. But making sure that there's something that you're be able to point to. It's not just because I really like the red roofs and I think it'll add a lot of character, right? The rules say that that's within the allowable scope. Follow those proper procedures, be very consistent. I hate to repeat myself, but again, this is what the tail end does, right? Now, the thing about it is, and Megan mentioned this earlier, the law's alive, right? It breathes. So what was a no, somebody sued and they found a reason and it changed in law. And so a few months even later, if the Court of Appeals has issued a decision, you might have different information to act on. So somebody might be coming and saying, well, there's a new decision because it changes. If it breathes, then it's constantly changing. I'll probably be back in front of the board or something else to talk about the new changes to the Elliot Larson Act here soon. So there's a whole lot of change on a regular basis, just making sure you're aware of them and basing your decision on current law and being open to that. And then I think that was the end of it.
Yeah.
So are there any other questions? You're ready, you're like, yes, they're done.
I got one quick one.
Yes.
You said that, I just wanted to turn it off. Jeez. About that last slide, there was that odd question, I can't remember what it was.
Case law, in the states and federal courts, still emerging?
So if the law changes, we say somebody came first, we told them no, they couldn't have that variance. If the law changes, do they have to resubmit a whole new application or is it just?
Well, in general, yeah, they would need to, right? If something came down the road, because generally you've already made that choice. So you're not just, they just can't say, you're not just going to go back and change. Say, oh, the law's, they're going to have to reapply. And it'd be sort of like a new consideration based on new information.
Because of the new law changes.
Because you denied it, you said you cannot do this.
Right. So I'm going to come back at you again and you said no before, well, now I got a new reason why you can. Well, okay, you're right, you can let you do that.
If the law changes or ordinance changes, yada, yada.
Yeah, but it's not automatic, they would need to.
Resubmit and the whole nine yards, okay.
So we have parting gifts. Which are copied from the slide. Don't expect you to remember these.
I'm a parting gift. We have to have at least one of those.
Yes.
Is there a rise involved?
Right, so one of. One of these five. And it says one or more. Some communities where I work, they'll require all five.
But we do not.
You do not, no, no.
I don't, any of the attorneys.
She got me with that ramp example, I'm all upset about this right now. I mean, seriously, you have to say no, in some sense, you know.
I know, I know, but okay. Well, I'll say it after the. Considerations today.
There are some serious considerations and, I mean, I've had that, I had.
We had.
You know, somebody who took somebody in who was being battered and they needed to change something, like, you know. Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot harder than I got a bigger boat and I need a new garage.
Right.
That's, poof.
Yeah, there's nothing like when people cry.
It's a real decision you might have to make.
Yes. But thank you for your time tonight and especially coming out on a night when you didn't have any cases. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It was very nice to meet all of you. Have met you, I look forward to seeing you all soon.
It's nice to meet you again, Nancy. Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to number eight, any board member comments?
No, it's a very good thing.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was good. Thank you very much.
I, oh, I have one more comment. I have taken the zoning basics class through MAB and it was a very good class for anybody that has not taken it. Very informative.
It was with MAB.
Michigan Association of Planners.
Oh, okay.
Which we are members of, so you get that information.
Okay, it's on those magazines.
Yes.
Okay.
I get emails from them all the time.
I do too, yeah.
Yeah, I do too, I've been looking at them.
That's it.
That's it? With that, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
All right, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.